Good evening. This is the planning board meeting of February 23rd, 2021. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to whose republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this, this meeting is conducted in person and via Zoom. And we have a link on our agenda. If anybody wants to join the meeting, they can click on the link. And the proceedings will be videotaped and re-podcast by Area 58 TV. The first thing we have on our agenda tonight is an A and R. It's 105, I guess this is up for discussion, but it's 105 Rochester Road, map 96 lot 10, Rivers Edge Realty Company. And I'll let me just turn this over to Jim to explain what's going on here.
Right. So this is the A and R plan that was, came before the board at the last meeting. And so at the last meeting, they agreed to withdraw their A and R plan. So then the board could go out to a site walk to take a look at the property. Some of the concerns were that there was not enough legal frontage for the four different lots. And so they agreed to give the board a chance to come in, have a discussion about how they wanted to proceed. There is an email in the packet from the engineer, Mike Camantel. If you want to just read that into the record so that you have it. As discussed at our site meeting on 2-221 at 105 Rochester Road, we would like to withdraw the A and R application at this time so as to provide the town enough time to review the alternative A and R sketch plan showing new lot lines for lots three and four only. See attached sketch plan showing the configuration of the new lot lines proximate to the frontage along Rochester Road. We modified the lot lines so as to provide direct access to each lot. However, we still would like to create an easement along both sides of the shared boundary lines between lots three and four in order to construct a single shared driveway. Purpose for this is still, is still to reduce the amount of disturbance within the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetlands. The new easements and old easements are shown on the sketch plan. Please review this alternative design with town council so we can res- resubmit a new formal A and R plan for endorsement during your March 2021 meeting. I attach the original A and R plan for reference. Signed, Mike Camantel, Senior Project Engineer, J.C. Engineering of East Wareham.
All right. Thank you, Jim. I know that a few board members were out here. We actually walked, we walked the length of the property. And it was Mr. Shea and who else was out there? Ellen was out there and Rich was out there. And I, they, they, so there's four lots out here and they actually showed pretty much where they would put houses. It's tight. It seems like this new easement may work. But I did see in the emails that Connie had a, something that, a question.
I didn't.
Yeah, about the rear lot.
Can I see a copy of that? I didn't get a copy of that.
Sure. Yeah, I'll show you mine here. Actually, I'll just give you the whole thing. Mr. Shea, did you have a, I saw an email that you sent, Jim, you had a question about the rear lot. And maybe that's something that we got to talk about too.
Our bylaw says it has, in order to qualify for a rear lot according to bylaw 2344. Thank you. Bylaw 2344 in regards to rear lots, which is the bylaw that covers them, says in order to qualify for a rear lot, maybe it's best if I read it. In order to be eligible for a rear lot, such property or set of continuous properties held in common ownership as of May 4th, 1998 shall not have been divided after such date. No further division of said property or properties shall be permitted after the creation of a rear lot. Documentation to this should be submitted to the building inspector. But in order to be eligible for a rear lot, such property or set of continuous properties held in common ownership as of May 4th, 1998. So it's, I mean, it says it, the properties have to have been held since 1998 in order to be eligible for rear lots. And that's, that's the big concern I have.
So I guess if you were going to look at this, Jim, you might have to take that into consideration. I mean, were you going to ask council about this plan? It seems like the driveway location is, now that it's moved, it's okay. They might want to consult with, with Concom first just to make sure that that isn't going to be a problem being close to the wetland, but it's not right on top of the wetland like it was before.
Right. And personally, my opinion is for safety concerns, if you're going to have two people passing on that 20-foot driveway, that there should be some sort of curb stoppage to prevent any sort of issues with people going into the ditch. Because it's a very narrow way. I mean, I could see it being accessed for a property, but if you're going to have two cars going back and forth on, on that little 20-foot strip of land, I would certainly think that curb stops would be in order.
Something to take into consideration, that's for sure. Any other concerns about these lots?
Well, looking at the map, looking at what you, what you gave me here, I mean, most of it looks like it's on wetlands. I mean, you got one lot cutting two active cranberries in half.
Let me show you. Let me just highlight where they plan on putting the houses. So we had that same concern and we didn't know what type, you know, where they were going to place the houses on the lots. And this is where they told us that they were going to place the houses. It's tight, but it seems like they can do it. And there, there is a way to get to every lot.
Well, that's only if you're using the easement for that back lot.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, where's your, oh, you don't have, yeah, I need the, I'll have to give you the plan of the, of the, I need the subdivision plan. But Jim was going to send, we weren't going to deal with this tonight. Jim was going to send it, was, was going to talk to town council about it, I believe. Might want to ask him again just to make sure.
Right. To be honest, I, I, I think with safety concerns and everything else, it'd be best split into two lots.
That's where they're going to be.
Again, that's up to the applicant.
I mean, I think it, I think it can be done, but, but there are a couple of concerns, that's for sure.
Well, the road that's there, it almost looks like it's just a maintenance road for the cranberry bogs that they want to turn into the easements. You know, you've got to look at how wide that is and if there's any deterioration, you're in the wetlands, you know? Can't pave it or anything.
Well, I don't, I don't know how much jurisdiction we have over what, what the driveway is going to look like. I mean, I think maybe conservation might be more concerned about that and it's going to be well within the, the wetlands buffer, but it is currently being used. I think, I did have other, one other concern and I've forgotten what it was now. Anybody else have anything?
Jim, is this, is all this stuff in the package from the previous meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I've got that at home.
Yeah. What's going to happen now is, is Jim, Jim suggested that maybe they wait till later on to another meeting to come back to us with a revised plan and then maybe he can get an opinion. Were you, were you going to get an, a legal opinion on this?
So what I could do, so we have a number of concerns. So one of them is the requirement of the May 19, May 4th, 1998 requirement.
Yeah, that's 23, 2344, yeah.
And then the, and then the second, so it looks like they shifted the line. But I guess is it the opinion of the board that that provides them the adequate access to the building area of the lot? And then proposing to put an easement over both sides of the property boundary to access the, the rear of the lot. Because before when we were out on the site, there was a guard rail coming across from where the river, you know, where the new bridge went in and coming up and it covered the entire frontage of lot four. But their proposal is to move that property boundary over, I believe it's, looks like 12 feet. And, and then, then there's 12 feet from, leaves 12 feet on the other property is, is part of the accessway. And so the two 12-foot accessways are now a 25-foot access, 12 and a half, well, 12 feet, 12 feet. But they measure them one, oh, okay, to the edge of the bog is 25.2. So it looks like they got 24 feet width between the old property line and then.
And the bog.
And the bog.
Right. So that's like a.
But the easement itself looks like it's only 12 feet.
Yeah. So it looks like, yeah, the 12 feet is the difference between the old property line and then the new property line. And then the easement itself, okay, yep, it's 12 feet. I see where it is down further.
Right. As a guide, our, our subdivision bylaws state that a dual driveway should be 22 feet wide with two feet on either side of clearance. But there's no way that this thing's going to get to, to 24 feet in width because then it's six, seven inches to the water. And that's my concern with the curving. I would think that, especially if, you know, not all neighbors get along, you know? If one guy's coming over the bridge and the other guy's angry at him and wants to go over on his driveway at the same time, you don't.
Having a bad day or something. Yep.
Well, the, the other concern that I just remembered was, and we were talking, we, we looked at during the site visit was there's a lot of bogs out there. And currently, a, there's a, there's a landowner that owns all those bogs and it's all one piece of land now that's going to be broken up into four lots. So, so what's going to happen is especially on lots three and four, you're taking a cranberry bog and you're actually going to be dividing it between those two lots. So those lots will be owned by separate individuals. So basically that, that bog is going to be, it, it's going to have to be abandoned, I would think.
I'd say, are they shutting it, are they shutting the bog down or?
And then you have a man-made pond out back for the flooding. And what would happen to that?
Yeah, we don't know. I mean, this will come back. I mean, you know, once we kind of get a legal opinion on this, if it's deemed necessary, then we'll come back. The engineer will come back and, and, and present the plan and, and the new plan. And then we'll have to discuss with him about that. But, you know, we, we talked to the bog owner, oh, it's actually the bog that's between, see, there's a bog, there's a property line between lots two and three that goes through a bog.
Two, two bogs, yeah.
Through, goes through two bogs. And, okay, three and four, it doesn't. I made a mistake. Yeah. So it's two and three, lots two and three divide. There's a bog in the front and the bog in the rear and the line between two and three divides the bogs. So I, I, I don't, I, I would think that those bogs would have to be abandoned if they're under different ownership.
Right. And I would appreciate seeing the 200-foot riverfront line and the 100 and the 65-foot Concom lines on these. Maybe they're here. I just can't see them because of the size of it.
I don't think that that's required on a Form A plan for the planning.
Oh, okay, yeah.
They, they, they can, they could flip a layer on and, and show it. But yeah, it's not really required by the planning board. Because eventually what they'll do is if, if we endorse this plan, it would have to go to Concom anyway, once they place, before they go to the building inspector, if they were to do any building, it would have to go to Concom for approval. Especially for driveways and for, and for the placement of the houses too because it looks pretty close, that they're going to be pretty close to the buffer areas. But I don't think, I think that's Concom's, Concom's concern. So I think we, I think we've, we've voiced our concerns. And if Jim just could run this by legal counsel and we'll have some sort of opinion hopefully by the time that, so he can advise the engineering company if this is going to work or not. Does that sound all right to you, Jim?
Sure.
So we'll just, so I don't think we have to vote on this. So they'll, they will, so they've withdrawn. So what do we have as this? So they're going to withdraw, oh, we'll have to vote on this. So they're going to withdraw.
Well, no, they, they withdrew.
And this will be without prejudice, right?
This isn't the new application, right? This is just a, to get a feel for.
Okay. So I think you do need to accept the.
Withdrawal.
Withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay.
And that allows them to come back at a future meeting after they address the planning board's concerns.
I thought we did it last meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Did we do it at the last meeting?
We can do it again just to make sure.
Or maybe.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm a little confused. I thought we, yeah, it wasn't.
We can do it again, right? It's not going to hurt anything. It's up by their request, so.
Yeah, I guess you can go by the email here.
We don't have the minutes, do we, for that?
Oh, the board votes to allow them to withdraw without prejudice. Mr. Shea motions to withdraw. Mr. Robertson, Robinson seconds and it was unanimous.
Okay. So that was already done.
So we already did. Okay. So the, tonight they just came forward with that sketch to see if we, what we thought of it. So we expressed our opinions and our concerns and, and we'll, we'll continue, we'll, they'll present a new plan later on.
At a future meeting.
At a future meeting after they discussed it with Jim. All right. So that was a simple process. So next we have Shaw Supermarket, 100 North Main Street, map 26 lot 1-0- R. I was looking at this with Jim today. I don't, so what happened? Jim and I looked at this and we, and it looked like it needed a special permit.
Because it was illuminated?
Right. It's illuminated and then it's in addition to existing signage. And so we would have to give a special permit to authorize them to exceed the sign requirement for, for that district.
Is the Shaw sign illuminated?
No, it's in a, it's a, what they're going to do is that they're adding.
The new sign will be illuminated. I'm not sure about the other sign.
Yeah, I can't remember if the Shaw's sign.
I think, I think it is.
Yeah. So they're adding another sign to the right of it. It's in packets what they're going to.
Yeah, yeah.
A drive up and go sign.
Yeah, that's new service that they're offering.
Yeah. So we were going to get in touch, I don't know, did I, did you get in touch with them, Jim, or?
Yes. Deb Deneen made a call to them. We had that other meeting we had to go to. So she contacted the person from the sign company to let them know that they would have to submit a special permit application.
Okay.
Because they're looking at LEDs and we only allow soft glow lighting illuminated?
Yeah, they'd have to take a look at it.
There was that and it went beyond, they already have a sign in front that, that used up the amount of square feet that they could put on the front of a building. So in order to add additional signage there, which would add more square feet, they have to apply for a special permit. So we'll.
So at this point, we just kind of pass on it. They're going to submit a, a application for a special permit.
Okay. All right. So the next is a public hearing. It's continued. Oh, okay. Yeah. This public hearing is continued to February 23rd, 2021, which is today. And this is the application of Ironwood Renewable LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100, 3580, 5300 of the Cava zoning bylaw. It's located at 223 Meadow Street and assesses map 82 lot 1-1 in Cava Mass to allow construction of a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation, 3.75 megawatts DC ground-mounted solar project. The level of development is 14.7 acres with 12.7 acres of clearing. Property located in a residential slash agricultural district. So what do we have on this, Jim?
So in this case, the applicant requested a continuance until the March 23rd meeting. That will give them time. There was, they need waivers from, from the abutters. And so there was one neighbor, they received waivers from other abutters, but there was one remaining neighbor that they have to spend some more time with to discuss getting a waiver from them. So they requested a continuance to the March 23rd meeting.
All right. I think that neighbor's here with us tonight. Were you here for?
I haven't heard from him, so.
You haven't heard? Yeah. Well, I'm sorry you, you came out of your way to come here tonight. But yeah, this meeting will be continued to March 23rd. And supposedly, I was hoping that they would get in touch with you and talk to you about some buffering that they were going to do out there. And so they had spoken to Jim about different types of fencing and different types of buffering of the, of the project out there. So, so that, if they don't get in touch with you, which I hope they, they would, but if they don't, on March 23rd, they're going to present what they have and, and show, show you, you know, how, how they're going to try to buffer the project. All right. So then we'll discuss it then. All right. All right. So entertain a motion to continue the public hearing of Ironwood Renewable LLC, 223 Meadow Street, to be continued to March 23rd.
Motion to continue to March 23rd.
Second then.
This is Connie Shea and Ellen seconded it. A, so any further discussion?
Have they filed reports through the Concom and the Public Works Department?
I don't know if they had to do anything with Concom because that was, I, I don't think the project was in a wetland area. I think that's what they, they said to us the last time they were here.
Okay.
I think they're on the cusp. So they may have to file Concom and they're going to follow up with a meeting with Brook Monroe Conservation Agent. So I think they just have to go back and just clarify that one area that, because you had the 200 river, river zone and then, then the 100-foot buffer zone. Hamilton and Carrier had met with Brooke once. And then at the last time I spoke with him, he seemed to indicate he was going to go back and talk to her again just to make sure that that whole area was, was taken care of, you know, that there was no outstanding issues with, with Conservation Commission.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. So let's do a roll call vote, please.
Connie Lee Shea says aye.
John?
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay. So that, that hearing will be continued March 23rd. Well, next on our agenda tonight, I see a familiar face in the audience. I, you can't see the face, actually. It's masked like everybody else. This is, okay, let me get the. Okay. So a public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Cava zoning bylaw, the Cava Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 23rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the Cava Town Hall, meeting room one, on the application of B-E-R-E LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100, 3700, 3580 and 5300 of the Cava zoning bylaw located at 370 Tremont Street, assesses map 128-7-0 and 128-8-0. Assesses map one twenty-eight dash seven dash zero and one twenty-eight dash eight dash zero of approximately thirty-six acres in Carver, Mass. And the balance of the project is to be constructed in the town of Wareham to allow the construction and operations of a dual-use, large-scale, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation, including battery storage and appurtenances on active agricultural land. Properties located in a residential agricultural district. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Ca- Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair, and the published dates for February fifth, twenty-twenty-one, and February twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. And, uh, so. All right, good evenings, uh, Sarah.
Good evening, uh, members of the board. My name is Sarah Sterns with Beals and Thomas. Um, as Mr. Chairman said, this is a project proposed by the proponent, um, named B-E-R-E LLC. And with me on Zoom is Adam Schumacher representing the applicant. He's in a small square at the top at the moment. Um, this is a project proposed on land owned by Brett Meredith, who's in the large square at the moment on Zoom. Um, the owner of the parcel in Carver and Wareham. Um, with me also tonight is our agricultural consultant, Ian Ward, um, with New England Consulting Services. And the four of us are here to give our opening presentation to the board for this proposed dual-use project for the portion in Carver, um, and make ourselves available to any questions the board may have. Um, if it pleases the board, I'll give a quick run-through of the proposal, and then we can open it up to questions. Um, so essentially, the, the parcel, the property in its entirety is approximately a hundred and ten acres. Um, we are looking at, um, well, of that one-ten, about seventy-seven acres are in Wareham. The remaining thirty-three are in Carver. And I like to use this aerial with the project overlay for our presentations, but I apologize that the town line is not as apparent on this. It's a little bit easier to see on the black and white plans. But I'll just point it out, um, it runs diagonally across the property. And you can see that the smaller portion to the north is the Carver portion. So Tremont Street is up here, running north-south. It turns to Carver Road at the Wareham line. And the existing access to the bogs is off of North Carver Road, which is a spur up of Carver Road. And the Meredith's access, the southern portion of the project in Wareham down here at a gated access. There's also another access point off of Carver Road, also in Wareham, um, to the Meredith's shop. Um, and, you know, that's where they have their operations and their Morton Building. So just to orient everybody a little bit better. You'll, you can see from the aerial that the bogs are set back quite a ways from the main road, um, surrounded by wooded areas, the Weeby Antic River, um, significant swath of wetlands, um, and more cranberry bogs. Slocum Gibbs is out in this direction, another large cranberry, uh, farmer. So, um, as Bruce said, this is in the RA District, no surprise, uh, in Carver. Map one twenty-eight lot seven and eight, there's a little, there's a little lot up here, but the majority of it is on one parcel. Um, so as Bruce mentioned, this is a proposed dual-use project, and I know some of you on the board are familiar with that, um, where the panels are proposed on the bogs themselves, regardless if they're wetland or upland bogs as classified by DEP. Um, and to allow continued farming, they are spaced and oriented differently from conventional panels. They are ten to thirteen feet high, and this particular proposal includes single-axis tracking panels, um, that rotate and follow the sun throughout the day. So similar to what we've talked about on some other projects for some of you, uh, a new concept for others, I, I understand. Um, the assessors' maps list this at, as zero Tremont Street. We've been working with the folks at Town Hall to assign this proposed project a true address for, mostly for emergency services and just clarity as it moves through the permitting process. So, um, going forward, we will use the address of three-seventy Tremont Street. Um, the proposed project is three megawatts AC, um, and which translates to seven-point-three megawatts DC for the entirety of the project in both towns. Um, and of the, so the hundred and ten acres, seventy-seven are in Wareham, thirty-three are in Carver. Of that site, the project itself is about thirty-three acres, twenty-eight of which are in Wareham, and approximately six acres of the project are on the bogs in Carver, if that makes sense. So you can see how it's divided by the town line. Um, a little bit about, um, dual use, um, just the fact that both components, the agriculture component is, is the priority here. Maintaining the farm is the priority. The reason that solar is being considered for this farm is to keep the farm in production. Um, and, you know, we're, we're very pleased to have Ian on our team. He has worked with the landowner and the developer to come up with a design that best accommodates continued farming. And that's really important because we need to make sure that the agricultural component comes first. So Ian has worked with Brett and Adam to lay out these, this preliminary, um, design of the panels on the bogs to accommodate loading areas, access roads, um, and, and whatnot, without touching any of the dykes, utilizing the land as it is today. We're not proposing any tree clearing, um, and really just trying to utilize the open space that the bog and appertinent areas provide. So we're really happy about that. We do have two equipment pads in Carver proposed, off to the edge here along the tree line. Um, battery storage is proposed, as with most of these, um, smart program projects, um, that qualify for the ASTGU program.
Will the battery be on the Carver side?
There are two on these equipment pads. So there's two in Carver and then two in Wareham proposed, as of right now. And I will say, having now kind of come out on the other side of a, of a, two projects that we permitted together um, with the previous planning board and, and Conservation Commission, now in the building permit review, from that time that we were issued our decisions, technology, technology really has been changing. So while this is our best guess, educated guess at a layout, we know that two battery pads in Carver may become one, or the exact orientation of the panels may change from this. This is the best we can provide at this time with the technology available to us. So, um, you know, I, I think that's a good thing. We're evolving and adapting to what works best for each site as we go through the process. Um, and I've been working, um, through, Ian and I both have been working through the building permit process on the other projects that we talked about in Carver for dual use, and really have kinda learned, had, lesson, lessons learned in terms of what to include now at this stage as we talk about these projects at the preliminary level with your board, and when we get to Conservation Commission as well. Um, I'm happy to say that we've been able to design the projects to accommodate the two-hundred-foot setback, so we have not had to reach out to any abutters to request relief, um, from that two-hundred-foot setback. Um, and I think that that's really pretty close to it. Um, we met with, um, Jim and Bruce, Jesse Boyle from Carver Fire, and Andy Glynes from Fussin O'Neill. Back in December, we had a pre-filing technical review committee meeting, which was very helpful in terms of talking about the layout and how this is all gonna work. Um, so I love Carver's TRCs. I find them extremely helpful to have everyone at the table. I've also spoken to Brooke Monroe, um, uh, Conservation Agent, to let her know that this was coming, and we talked about some different, um, ideas as well. So we will be filing with Conservation Commission once this process gets underway. Um, and so I have a preliminary comment letter from the Fire Department, which is, um, very similar to others that they have prepared for these types of projects where, um, their con- concerns are mostly related to, um, longer-term safety applications, training, et cetera, with the battery storage units as well as access. Um, those are kinda their two main tenants when they review this. So Jesse has driven out here. Um, I will say, having been out here myself, the Merediths take it, take excellent care of their property. Their roads are in impeccable condition, um, their bogs are beautiful, and it's very easy to get around. Um, so we'll, we'll follow up with Carver Fire just to make sure their comments are confirmed and maybe get a second memo now that they have the plans filed with them. Um, we've also received a comment letter from Andy Glynes at Fussin O'Neill with some, uh, review comments, mostly related to, um, the stormwater management. Um, so we'll take a look at those comments and make whatever revisions are necessary, very minor items. Um, but I, I don't see anything, um, insurmountable at all. Um, four-page memo, not too bad. So, um, a lot of just tweaking some items on the plan, just to, um, dimension certain things and label a couple of the things differently. Um, but I think I've covered everything, the, the nuts and bolts of it, anyway. Um, if you have questions specific to the solar array and the operations of itself, Adam is here to respond to that. Um, the land and what's, you know, what the operational use of it is today, Brett can, Brett and Ian can respond to that. Um, and we're happy to, happy to continue talking about this. We're also happy to set up a site visit, um, so you can take a look at it yourselves and, um, see, see for yourselves what it looks like. Um, before I turn it over, one more thing. Um, as I've done on some other projects, um, on my way home from the transfer station, actually, a couple of weeks ago, I had my daughter take a stream of pictures as we were driving through Wareham and Car- up to Carver on Tremont Street. And, um, I can show the board, or I can send it in with our, maybe with our review memo from Fussin O'Neill, that you cannot see the bogs even at this time of year. And I wanted to make sure I did it at this time of year where the screen is at its absolute thinnest. Um, and because the, the bogs themselves are so set back from the street, and there's a berm along much of the, much of Carver Road in Wareham, it's really invisible, even more so as you get into Carver. So, um, and clearly no one is looking at it from the wetland side of the property either. I mean, that's wooded and beautiful, and, you know, we'll just stay as is. So in my mind, this is a great location for a project like this. And if there's a cranberry grower who is interested in taking advantage of this program, I fully support it. Um, the state fully supports it, so, you know, we're, we're working through the process, and we're happy to talk about it in more detail with all of you. Thank you.
Will there be any kind of safety fencing around it so nobody can get in there?
So, um, with most conventionals, with all conventional solar arrays, I believe, there's a fencing component, safety com- safety fencing component to it. Dual-use projects, because they are set off of any kind of roadway, on a bog, surrounded by water, and any electrical components are out of reach, don't necessarily have to have a six or seven-foot chain-link fence surrounding them. Um, the equipment pads absolutely will be fenced and locked with locks that are, um, usable for Carver Fire in case of an emergency. We're still debating whether or not this project will be fenced. In our current plan set, we have not shown it as fenced, but, um, we're talking about it now. The reason that we would not have a fence surrounding this is because simply the land still needs to be farmed, and it's just adding another constraining layer to the agricultural operations. So if we don't have to have it, it would be nice not to, as long as those equipment pads are fenced and locked. Um, but in our next iteration of plans, we will clarify whether or not a fence will be added. Um, if we do, it will be a standard six or seven-foot chain-link with a six-to-eight-inch wildlife gap at the bottom, um, particularly since we're so close to that tree line. We wanna, we want the critters to be able to continue to pass through to the bogs and back to the woods and the river.
Yeah, uh, we've, we've had other projects that, that actually, I think Sarah presented to us before, um, that had dual use on them, and we didn't, uh, it didn't require any fencing around the cranberry bogs, just because it, it limits access to the cranberry bogs and picking and, and, uh, working on the bogs, digging out the ditches, doing all the things that the cranberry growers have to do. So, um, a lot of these do have roads that lead into the site, so it, gates are, are placed across the road and locked. And, uh, key will be given to the Fire Department, uh, in case there's a fire out there. They'll have a key so they, they can unlock the gate and get to, and access the property. Jim and I did, did look at this, uh, plan with Sarah, and, uh, and the Fire Department was, uh, with us too, I believe.
Yep.
And, um, to me, this is a, a, you know, a perfect project. Um, we're not cutting it, there's no, uh, tree cutting to be done there. It's, uh, gonna be, uh, placed, uh, over the cranberry bogs. Um, I think even the transformer, even the, even the, uh, battery storage is, uh, is gonna be placed in an open area. And, uh, so, so that there's no, so no- nothing's gonna be disturbed out there. It's just gonna be the panels, uh, that are gonna be placed over the bog and the, uh, and the, uh, storage units, uh, placed out there. Um, it's perfect. You don't see it from the street, cause it's, it's far off the street. And there are no neighbors around there that are gonna view the project. Um, but. We still, we'll have to do a, we'll still do a site walk out there just to take a look. And, uh, it's, it's good to know where these things are going, anyway. So, uh, at some point in time during this discussion, we'll, we'll pick a time for a site walk, and we will continue the, uh, the, the hearing, uh, to another date. So, uh, are there any other questions by any of the board members?
I, I just have a couple of quick ones. Um, battery storage units, are they fully self-contained, uh, units? No leakage?
Yes.
No, and, um, I didn't see any sort of, um, data sheet on the fire suppressant that's expected to be used?
For the battery storage system?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure that that gets added to our response packet.
Have you already, uh, filed with, uh, the CONCOM?
We have not. Um, we wanted to get the planning board process started first.
Well, this is a public hearing, right?
It is.
I, I believe you're supposed to file within three days with the Conservation Commission of, of, uh, applying through the Special Permit Granting Authority, which, which happens.
Three days?
It's, well, according to bylaw fifty-three forty, whenever application for a special permit is filed with the SBGA, the applicant shall also file within three working days of the filing of the completed application with said authority. Copies of the application accompanying site plan and other documentation to the Board of Health, CONCOM, Building Inspector.
I, I believe that means the special permit gets sent to the CONCOM for review.
It says we're supposed to have, uh, their recommendations in hand at the time of the public hearing.
On the special permit, not on the notice of intent.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing on what you're planning to do, right?
If, if Brooke has given you, or the commission has given you comments on their copy that's been distributed that, to them of the special permit through the planning office, then that's great. I have no control over that.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking that, because you're, it's your responsibility to file with the Conservation Commission.
Yes, we filed the requisite number of copies with the permitting department, which to my understanding got, got distributed to the town clerk, the Conservation Commission, building, et cetera, that needed copy.
Right, that's your responsibility, not, not, I'm, I'm, it's not Jim's responsibility. So I, that's why I'm asking you.
Yes, so the, so the way that we have been asked to file, um, is to submit, I believe it's eight copies, so that the permitting, the staff at the permitting department, which I have asked specifically, if I should walk around copies to all the different offices and deliver them, hand-deliver them. I've been asked not to do it.
I'm, I'm not getting on your case. I'm asking because.
I'm just telling you so you know the process.
It falls on, on your shoulders, and that's why I'm. It falls on your shoulders and that's why I'm asking you rather than-
So I'm just telling you, I have taken that initiative and have been asked to hand just the packets to the permitting department for their distribution.
Thank you.
As far as comments back from them, I haven't received any comments back other than from the fire department and the-
I wouldn't even know if you were supposed to get the comments. I just know that any comments we're supposed to have at the time of the public meeting.
I guess I don't have any.
Those are my only questions.
Mr. Chair, you said it perfect. This, to me, is an ideal location. I appreciate the fact that farming is going to continue, especially for a cranberry grower. And I appreciate the fact that there are no abutting neighbors that are going to have to look upon this and that your daughter took pictures so you can't even see it off the road at this time of the year when there's no foliage. So I'd like to, you know, compliment you for finding a place that, in my opinion, is the perfect location for this kind of thing. And it continues to help a farmer grow.
Thank you. I can't take any credit for site selection. But when we have a willing landowner and a creative developer and a great site selection that can interconnect into the grid easily, has the right facing area that requires no tree clearing with no residential abutters, I really consider that a win-win. And I'm really proud of this layout and I think it really is a good project. If I haven't mentioned it, I'm also a 20-plus-year Carver resident myself, which some of you know. And, you know, I really believe that this is something that is not appropriate for all of our growers to even consider, but for those that it is a consideration for, it's a real benefit to those in our community and it can be. And I really support that. This project in particular, it's a very large scale, as you can tell. But the portion in Carver is, I mean, it's right on. And I do think that it can be very successful.
The only question I did have, as far as what I didn't see on the plan, are there going to, is there going to be telephone poles added or is this an underground?
For the interconnection to the street?
Yeah.
So it's in Wareham.
Okay.
What we're proposing to do, and it's actually changed a little bit from when we submitted the plan. So when we submit our revised set, you'll see it. It's on the Wareham side, but just it's good for you to know what's happening with it. The idea is to utilize the existing access to the Merit of the Shop and create kind of a spur road off of that for direct access for the utility and construction without disrupting their operations at the shop. That will also serve as the point of interconnection.
But it will remain overhead?
And it will be, it's underground to a point just on the site and then it comes up via poles to the street.
Thank you.
Do you know how many poles they're going to place before it gets out to the street?
I don't know yet because we're still finalizing that little roadway design. We had our first public hearing in Wareham last night, actually. So we're kind of traveling on the same schedule with the two planning boards. And we had just moved from our original point of interconnection down here to combining it with this little road. So we're still kind of working out the design on that.
Okay, but that's going to be in Wareham anyway.
That's in Wareham.
Ah, okay. We'll let the planning board in Wareham.
Yep, we'll let them fill out.
Okay. Any other questions by any of the board members? Seeing none, and just remind everybody, as usually what happens to me, I go to bed at night and then I think of things. So we have another meeting to ask any other questions. So if there's anything further, don't think that this is your last chance. We'll continue this meeting and we can ask questions at the next. So if the board members don't have any other questions, ask anybody out in the audience. Audience is very limited tonight, so I see no one raising their hands.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask if Adam Schumacher or Brett Meredith have anything to add?
Yes, that would be good. And if you, before you leave tonight, could you write down all these people's names that are on the screen and yourself and Eon so that we can give that to-
Will do.
So we can have our minutes done correctly. So, good evening.
Hello. I can't see you all, but I understand you can see me. And I don't have anything real specific to add. I'd just like to thank the members that made positive comments regarding the project. We really appreciate that. And it's always great when you can work on a project like this where it's a win-win and no real, you know, ancillary side effects. So we're very, very happy about that.
All right, anybody else?
Ian, do you want to add anything or you could? Okay.
All right, I, it's, you know, I've never seen such a perfect area to put this. And it's really shielded from everybody. So we only just, we have the concern about the battery storage that Carnesei asked for. So if we could have, will that, you'd be able to come up with something?
Yes.
For, before our next meeting?
Yes, absolutely. It's something that we worked on with Carver Fire on our last project. So I'll make sure to add in that to our response memo to Fussin' O'Neil and Copy Jim on that as well.
And the fire department must, do they usually look at that too? I imagine they would have to, yeah.
They, so they tend to comment on the battery storage, mostly to make sure that it's all compliant with fire code. And also they want our commitment, the developers' commitment to training and review of more detailed information during the building permit process. And more information, basically, as the site design evolves. So we've been able to provide them with that. And I have worked with a number of different solar developers who have used different manufacturers for those types of things. And we've been able to work with Carver Fire on that successfully so far. So I have no doubt that we'll be able to address that and include that information in our next round of submittal information.
Now, you've done a few of these over the years. Has the battery storage unit and the fire compression, has that changed over the years? Has that been improved or is it pretty much typical, the same after, even after all these years?
Maybe Adam can comment on that, but I believe, you know, it's still very similar to what we first talked about even a couple of years ago. The main components are the same, but, you know, like I said, the technology is evolving so quickly. Adam, I don't know if you heard the question, but have the battery storage units changed from our earlier projects a couple of years ago?
No, not significantly. I think the only real trend that we've seen is a change in the lithium ion technology. There's, so there's different chemistries that can make up the lithium ion batteries. And the batteries actually that are being installed in the projects, the previous projects switched to this newer chemistry. That was one of the changes that Sarah referenced. And it's called LFP. Let me see if I can remember all the chemicals, something lithium, something phosphate. But it's actually more fire, it's safer from a fire perspective. It doesn't have the same thermal runaway concerns that some lithium ion chemistries have. So I think that would be the only real change. Other than that, you know, the battery containers themselves, they're, you know, they're just standard shipping containers to begin with. There's not much real technology there. The fire suppression system is still the same. And, you know, so other than that, there's not much to the-
All right, thank you. Okay, any more questions by any of the board members? Seeing none, entertain a motion to, so this will be heard, Jim, on our, let's see, March 23rd meeting?
Yes, continued to that date.
Mr. Chairman, is there a meeting the week before?
Well, we have a, March 9th is for a follow-up on the zoning articles, so we're reserving that.
So it'll be the 23rd. So entertain a motion to continue. The public hearing on the application of B E R E L L C, requesting a special permit and site plan review at 370 Tremont Street to March 23rd at 7:00.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
I'll second that motion.
You second?
Yes, Carnesei seconds.
Okay, so Kevin Robinson made the motion, Carnesei second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Carnesei says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right, thank you. So before we, before Sarah goes, let's pick a time that we can do a site walk. Sarah, is there a good time or?
No, you pick and I will accommodate.
All right. I don't, so, do we have, can we mark the corners of the solar field? Or can we just do that by showing us the bog areas that they're going to be?
Yeah. I mean, it's essentially all of the bogs in view, so.
So what, so we can like walk the perimeter?
Oh, yeah.
Just to, just to take a look?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, we do have daylight savings on the 14th, so we would have a little more time in the afternoons after the second week in March. But then that would only give us 10 days.
Jim, is there a, is there a time that you could, you could do this?
I'm open.
I know we've been doing noon time. Is noon time a good time for everybody, if we could start that way? I know John, John, you're out there.
Yeah, I'm going to be, I'm going to be traveling again mid-March, so.
All right. Okay. How about everybody else? So we just pick a day? Would noon time be all right with you, Rich?
Yep, noon time's fine.
Ellen? Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And with me, that would be fine. Okay, so let's pick a day.
As long as it's not Friday, I'm good.
Friday, we'll try to avoid Friday. All right, so. Well, we have no snowstorms in sight for the next couple of weeks.
Don't jinx it.
And, and maybe the ground will be bare in a, in a few days. How about the last week of February?
I think we're there.
That is this week.
We have that, that's right. We've got four more days.
Let's not do the last week in February. That's right.
Last week in March.
It's crazy.
Somewhere around 50 degrees.
About Tuesday, March 2nd?
Tuesday, March 2nd. Well, we could do it then. That would be a good day for me. How about Tuesday, March 2nd? Does that work with you? Kevin?
Yeah, what, and we're going to use that 272 address?
Well, so that's not going to show up in your GPS yet because that's made up by the folks downstairs for now. What's that?
Zero.
It's zero. Just plug in zero Tremont Street. The best, so Brett, is the best way to place to meet at your shop or down by the gate off of North Carver Road? Brett Meredith, can you hear me?
I'd say by the shop.
At the shop? Okay. Do you know what the address is of that building? I don't either.
We could, you could email that out to us.
I will do that.
You have them right, you have them right there, Ken.
Adam, if you're talking, you're on mute.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say the address is 20 North Carver Road.
20 North Carver, okay.
For the shop? The shop's on Carver Road.
The gate, the gate off North Carver Road.
Yeah, is that where you want us to meet, at the gate?
You can do it either at the shop off of 0 Tremont, wherever, whatever you guys can find.
So if you're, if you're driving down Tremont Street and you cross into Wareham, Brett's shop is, I mean, it's a driveway surrounded by woods. So you've all driven by it probably a thousand times and may not even know it's there. But now if you're driving by, turn your head and you'll see it just sort of, it's a paved driveway down to his shop. We can meet there, there's parking there. Or we can, you can drive down off of Carver Road onto North Carver Road and there's a gated, a very pretty gated access there. And we can meet there and it's wide open to the bogs. We can walk in or drive in.
Maybe that would be the best place then. We could just get out of our car and start the, start the walk from there?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is that we're like at the southern tip in Wareham.
Oh, okay.
Like our, our interest is up here.
Yep.
So it probably is better to meet at the shop.
At the shop.
If we're going to head north and look at the Carver piece of it.
So we're going to go to 0 Tremont?
Is that 0 North, 20 North Carver?
It's 0 Carver, is it 0 Carver Road?
0 Tremont Street.
Well, the access is not on Tremont, it's on Carver Road.
They're in bee season. Does the planning board know where they store the bees across the street on 58?
Yeah, the big field.
I'll see them.
No, you're okay. You gotta head out and sell Carver.
Just past the church, right? The bees on the right inside the buildings there.
Yes.
So he's across the street.
This is across the street, yeah. This is what the bee area, or I think that's it.
Yeah, they rake the open, where the bees are, somewhere in there.
Yeah, you just might drive by it a couple of times. So it's the only curb cut on that side of the road in that stretch of area.
It's about 200 feet before North Carver Road.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
If you're driving south and you get to North Carver Road, you've gone by it. So turn around and head back north.
Okay.
And look for this. But in your travels until then, if you're in this neck of the woods, take a look for it. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so March 2nd at noon time at the Merit of the Shop. And Brett, are you, are you available that day to meet us?
I should be if I'm not, my dad would be around for sure.
Okay.
One of them would be there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, so we'll see everybody there at March 2nd, Tuesday, at 12:00 for the site walk.
And if the weather is inclement, I'll just email Jim and maybe we can come up with a backup date if no one wants to go out in the rain or snow.
All right.
That's understandable.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
If you come up with that list of names and give it to Jim. Thank you, Sarah. All right. We got planning board member notes. Anybody have anything that they want to say tonight? I just want to just say, this is something unusual, so I just, and it was, it was sent to my house, but it's made out to the planning board. And this is from Laura and Tom McNamara on 246 Tremont Street. And they said, Dear Mr. Mackey and Carver Planning Board, sincere thanks for addressing our concerns with regards to the Cape Way cannabis at the February 9th public meeting. Due to the COVID, we did stay away at this time. The vote did not go our way, but we hope through education, smart decisions about THC will keep- The vote did not go our way, but we hope through education, smart decisions about THC will keep Carver kids healthy. So I just, I just thank them for that. That's something unusual we don't get very often, and, and I guess those are some things we, we have to think about too, as time goes on. All right, planning director notes.
So, in your package, you should have received the copies of the zoning bylaw changes, articles for town meeting, and the meeting is, earlier today, I thought it was, you know, a couple of weeks from now, but it's actually next week, 'cause they took away the last week of February on me. So, Tuesday, March second, we'll open up on, with, with the zoning bylaw articles, and that meeting will be strictly on zoning bylaw, and then we set aside March ninth as the backup date, so any articles that we're not able to get through, or something that we make changes from one meeting to the next, that gives us a chance to review those, and then, you know, just put it all together.
What time do you want us here, March second, at seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, yeah. And it's gonna, the, the meeting's gonna be down in meeting room four. Select board has this room that night.
So I read through the bylaw changes today, and I just want to thank Jim for, for, I know we spent a lot of hours and weekends working on these bylaws, and I just want to thank him for doing that, and we do have quite a few. I don't think most of them are too complicated, but, but we do have some that are a little more complicated than others, so I guess it's, it may take us the time to, to go through them, but I don't, shouldn't really be any difficulty. But you never know until we have the meeting.
And then another item, received an email today from Joe Shanahan. He was involved with the Snap It Road solar project, and so he sent the email saying that he moved to a different company, and that they were drawing their application for a solar project at that site. So that was before, most of you were on the board. Kevin Robinson remembers lots of good times over at the Snap It Road, as well as Bruce, but that particular project, it was in a, compared to this site, that was, the Snap It Road was the worst case in terms of a site, because.
It impacted every abutter.
Right, wide open, there was one house that had beautiful views of the bogs, and the proponent, he, he didn't go out and do any legwork with the neighbors ahead of time, so kind of quite the opposite of some other applicants who come before us who do a very thorough job ahead of time. So myself and Brooke were very happy that he was withdrawing his application.
And what was the family that was most affected there? Remember their name?
Yeah.
Perrys, the Perrys.
The Perrys.
Yeah.
So if the Perrys are watching tonight, that project has gone away, and I know they were quite concerned, their parents were concerned, and so their, their view of the, their high view of the bogs will remain the same, right now, anyway. But, yeah, that, that was a very difficult project, and I'm glad that it's gone. Any other, there's an item here, discussion, Jim?
Uh, nope, don't know what that's for.
Okay. We have minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty-one. Has, everybody had a time to look at these? Unless somebody has some changes to be made, I'll entertain a motion to.
Just one comment.
Okay.
Julian Wooton, it's double Os, not double U's. I get a lot of emails from her, so I know.
Ah, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended by Jim Wall.
So we have a motion by Carnie Shea, and a second by Ellen Sodillo. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Abstain.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right. So we had one, two, three, four, yes, and one abstention. So, our next meeting, uh, date, oh, I just put my calendar right.
March second at seven o'clock?
So my second for the zoning articles, March ninth, if we don't get through all the zoning articles, we'll have our next meeting March ninth?
That's correct.
Okay, and then we'll continue the public hearing we heard tonight on the twenty-third, March twenty-third, and, and all these zoning articles, if accepted by the, by the board, will go to the annual town meeting, which will be May, April, April thirteenth. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Kevin, a second by John. We'll do a roll call vote.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right, good night, good night, everyone. Thank you.